Calling to order the Monday, April 4th, regular meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean.
Here.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Henan.
Here.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Councilmember Vilani.
Here.
Mayor Turbrack.
Here. The first order of business tonight is the approval of this evening's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Henan. Are there any changes or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. With us this evening is Pastor Adam Grob.
Let's pray tonight. God, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for your chance to gather to do the work on behalf of this city. I pray that it would be done in a pleasing way, in a way that is compassionate and caring to all. I pray for these council members that you would give them wisdom tonight. We thank you for their service and thank their families for the sacrifices that they make so that they can be part of leaving this city. Lord, even though we're a small city on this side of the globe, we think about our brothers and sisters on the other side of the globe suffering in places like Ukraine today. And, God, we pray for justice, but we also pray for hope and for just that the suffering would stop over there. But we thank you for all the blessings that we have here in Berkeley. We just ask your blessing on this time tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll now move on to public comments. Remember, these are for public comments for items that are not included on tonight's agenda. You will have the opportunity to speak on specific agenda items while they are being considered. Remember, council members will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign in at the clerk's desk. When you come up to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
My name is Robert Rivey. I live at 4292 Elwood Avenue in Berkeley. I have something to read to you guys. I have, this last February, a person turned the house next to me, which is 4272, into Airbnb. And I'm gonna read. Okay, I've lived there 37 years. This is the first time I have actually been in front. I came here one other time because a neighbor wanted the cement next to the fence. So he gained a variance for this, okay? And all the time I've lived here, we have had homes near us that have been rentals and have had no issue. The difference now is that instead of having a landlord situation, we have a commercial business running remotely next door. It may well be a hotel. It has come to my attention that Berkeley, Michigan, has no special rules for Airbnbs. We have constant turnover of groups of people coming through. Since February 8th of this year, we have had 20 groups of people stay next door. One group of the people parked in our driveway, which is around the corner and on Webster, lighting up our bedroom late at night while the other car pulled in front of our house and used the flashlight on the phone to go to our front door. Okay, safety. The garage is flooding. The garage was removed, but the garage was below grade by at least over a foot, and it's a swimming pool when it rains there. Okay? I brought that to the city. And it says pretty much the whole flood, or the whole yard floods, which mean at this address, there's still debris all around the yard. These people want to make money on this. They at least should take care of what needs to be taken care of. Liability issues. Who's responsible, or who's responsible if someone is bit by an animal staying at the Airbnb? We've had a dog that sat out for over a week, had his food and everything outside, and the fence in the back is so bad that they can actually climb up and have their paws on the other fence. Do they have to be vaccinated and licensed, like the rest of the animals in Berkeley? How are you going to regulate a situation of constant turnover? Okay? And we also had a lady walking her cat. She is from California. The cat tried to get in our house when my wife opened the door to get the mail. When I tried to resolve some issues directly with one of the owners, the response I got was, this is just business. Berkeley is a residential community, I thought. And why aren't these people in a different zone on Greenfield? Isn't that not zoned commercial? Okay. This is going to destroy our neighborhood by making it less desirable place to live in peace and raise a family. It may even drive down home values. When we moved into our house 37 years ago, we had two daughters under the age of five. We moved here because we wanted safe neighborhood and a good school system for our children. I would have never considered putting my family at the risk of moving in a residential area with a hotel next door. Airbnbs need to have rules and regulations put into place to preserve our neighborhood, and those rules need to be enforced. So, and I talked to the lady about turning lights off because they've had them over a week on now. It lights up our whole backyard and it lights up our bedroom because our bedroom was right next to the house. And I contacted the people, the governor, and the two congressmen, and I've got no answer so far, but I did this Friday. And I think that we should pay attention to the Berkeley, California rules because they are very sound and very fair. If we have to live with something like this, we need to read them. My wife thought that were the Berkeley, Michigan rules because every time she would bring up Berkeley, Michigan, the rules for Airbnb would come up. And of course, no luck. It was not Berkeley, Michigan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert.
Good evening to this honorable body. I'm Mike McGinnis, Executive Director of the Berkeley Downtown Development Authority. Just wanted to put on your radar three noteworthy items that are coming up very soon. We have our first Ladies Night Out of the season. Instead of the three that we usually do in past years, we now have four offerings. And so that First Ladies Night Out is Thursday, April 7th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. We have over 20 participating retailers. Some retailers have promotional items they're giving away for free. Puck Hockey has puck shots, which are actually Jell-O shots, but Almond's Health and Beauty is giving away free scrubs, other giveaways at Vitrine and elsewhere. But promotional bags will be given away by the Downtown Development Authority. And we encourage you to shop, dine, explore downtown Berkeley. It's a great time to get together with friends or family, and that's on April 7th. I've spoken to the proprietor of Little Lou's Hot Chicken, one of our new downtown attractions that'll be opening shortly, and their target to open is April 26th. So of course, there's always things that may come up, but that's their intention. So he did feel comfortable with me sharing that with the Berkeley masses, that April 26th, please experience and check them out at the former Papa's Pizza at Catalpa and Coolidge on Coolidge. So please explore Little Lou's Hot Chicken and continue to support them in our downtown Berkeley destinations. And on May 1st, if you can save the date, it's a Sunday, one of our newest downtown Berkeley businesses, Flipside Records, will be sort of ground zero for our next downtown Berkeley block party. So celebrating the music and the vitality and joy that Flipside Records, a very popular regional destination, now has moved to Berkeley. But we love the vitality that comes from the library being next door to the record store and even more that'll come in that important part of Coolidge. So we hope that you'll be able to join us. It's noon to 4:00 on May 1st. And we welcome other downtown or community-wide organizations that want to be a part of that somehow. You can always contact me, but also visit downtownberkeley.com to find out ways that you, your family, or your different organizations can participate as your schedule allows. So that's what I got. Thank you. Oh, and happy birthday, Mayor Turbrack.
Any other public comments this evening? Seeing nobody else, I can get a good eye on everybody here today. I don't see anybody coming from the back. All right, we will move on with tonight's order of business. First up is our consent agenda. Ms. Mitch, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 39th regular city council meeting on Monday, March 21st, 2022. Two, proclamation number P-822, matter proclaiming and recognizing the volunteers of the City of Berkeley and declaring the week of Sunday, April 17th, through Saturday, April 23rd, 2022, as Volunteer Week.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Baker. Are there any changes? All right, seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. Consent agenda has passed. We now move on to our regular agenda. Would you please read item number one?
Recognitions presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none, we'll move on to item number two, please.
Motion number M-3622, matter of authorizing the Knights of Columbus 2299 West 12 Mile Road, Berkeley, Michigan, to conduct a Tootsie Roll Drive in the City of Berkeley from Friday, April 8th, through Sunday, April 10th, from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Council reserves the right to rescind the permit due to state and/or county health and pandemic protocols.
Is there a motion to approve M-3622?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Price with support from Councilmember Vilani. Mr. Baumgarten.
Hi, Goodness Mayor. This is an annual item, I believe returning for the first time in a little bit here. But the Knights of Columbus have had a longstanding tradition of raising funds through the Tootsie Roll Drive. This year, there'll be a 12 in Coolidge and 11 in Coolidge. The Knights of Columbus in the past have done a really good job of keeping themselves and their members safe during this drive. They know to, they clear out during the, with traffic's moving and have worn safety gear and making sure that they are very visible to the drivers as they stop at the red light and hopefully donate to some worthy causes here. You do have a gentleman here representing the Knights of Columbus, but this has been through our normal review. The clerk's office garnered all the reviews and support needed, and we are recommending approval of this item.
Just to clarify, you said 12 mile and 11 mile, also Woodward, eastbound 12 mile at Woodward. I saw that in the notes from the chief. I don't know, is that not the case? Okay.
I don't see any applications, sir.
Yeah, just want to make sure that we are all talking about the same thing here, the same location. So we're just talking about Coolidge, 11 and 12?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for members of council? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, and perhaps this is for our representative here this evening. Just wanted to mostly thank you for the work that you do and for continuing this effort and in a safe way that helps preserve and protect not only your volunteers and things, but hopefully brings about a couple of little shillings to help out the cause there. And invite you, if you'd like to make any comments, since you made all the way to come out here tonight.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mayor Turbrack, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Jim Nikovich. I'm a resident of the City of Berkeley, and I'm a grand knight at the local Knights of Columbus Council. And I certainly appreciate you reviewing the application. It is for a worthy cause. We will use the proceeds to support charities that help out children and adults with intellectual disabilities.
Well, and thank you, Jim. The organization obviously has been a part of this community for a long time and have had many of these Tootsie Roll Drives, and I don't ever recall hearing any issues with any of them. I will again, because Councilmember Blanchard isn't here, so reiterate the let's make sure we have our safety vests. Obviously, that's incredibly important for everybody's safety. But other than that, the organization certainly has been a great partner, and we want to continue to be a good partner as well. So thank you, Jim, for being with us.
Thank you very much, and I will relay the message, make sure everyone stays safe.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any additional questions? I did talk with Jack. He did review everything, and he was very happy. Everything is in order. No issues there. Thank you, Jim, for being with us this evening as well. I know it's not a huge runover from Princeton, but I appreciate you being here nonetheless. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M-3622?
Henan.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-3722, motion to approve the appointments to various boards and commissions.
Is there a motion to approve M-3722?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Dean with support from Councilmember Henan. Mr. Baumgarten.
Hi, Goodness Mayor. The applicants you have before you this evening are all direct result of applications that came into us during our early year drive that closed on February 18th. So we received a ton of great applications, as you saw when you reviewed them. We had some wonderful volunteers that stepped up to help their community. But each time, we have to choose only a handful based on the vacancies that we have. But I appreciate, this is the first batch that went through the process that was adopted earlier this year, and so I think it worked out very, very well. We got the committee chairs and the liaisons very involved this time, and I appreciate each and every one of your work on bringing the slate forward this evening. So without further ado, I'll note the applicants that are requesting permission for appointment this evening. So first up is our Beautification Committee with Lynn Kadra, appointed for a partial term through July 1st of 2024. Board of Review is Shereen Reese, appointed through July 1 of 2027. The Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee has two applicants before this evening. Emily Kemner, appointed through a partial term on 2023. Adrian Penny, an appointment to a partial term through also July 1, 2023. Next is our Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Mike Dooley is an appointment to a partial term through July 1, 2024. Technology Advisory Committee has two this evening. Again, Lynn Kadra, an appointment to a partial term in July 1, 2023. Heather Damrin, appointment through a partial term on July 1, 2023. And last, but certainly not least, Tree Board has one applicant for you this evening, Holly Talinda, with a partial term expiring July 1, 2024. So thank you to each and every one of them, and certainly Ms. Kadra, who has jumped in here twice for you this evening.
Discussion from councilmembers on any of our volunteers today, other than to say, as the city manager said, thank you for volunteering your time and your talents. In Ms. Kadra's case, maybe a couple times throughout the month. And, you know, we had a proclamation today as part of the consent agenda to recognize volunteers. And actually, I was going to do this during my communications, but I'm actually going to do it right now because it's in the spirit of volunteers. So not going to officially do this the way we normally do. But here's what we are, what we passed today, declaring the week of Sunday, April 17th, through Saturday, April 23rd, 2002, as Volunteer Week. Whereas throughout the history of the United States, the state of Michigan, and certainly right here in the City of Berkeley, citizens have actively volunteered their time, talent, and energy to improve the community. And whereas volunteers in Berkeley enhance the quality of life of others by volunteering with service organizations, in schools, places of worship, hospitals, youth groups, as members of community boards, and with other organizations that benefit our community. Whereas volunteer service has been needed more than ever since the onset of COVID-19 pandemic, with many individuals stepping up to assist others in need. And whereas the spirit of volunteerism grows stronger in the face of even the most challenging situations, and whereas National Volunteer Week was established 48 years ago in 1974 by President Nixon, as a special time to recognize the amazing contributions of volunteers. The City of Berkeley hereby proclaimed that the week of Sunday, April 17th, through Saturday, April 23rd, 2022, shall be recognized as Volunteer Week in the City of Berkeley. And the Council of the City of Berkeley extends immense gratitude to the many Berkeley volunteers that devote countless hours each year to enhance and uplift our entire community. And that was obviously proclaimed today and signed by me. And I think as we, you know, welcome these new volunteers and some are returning volunteers back to boards and commissions in the city, I think it would probably be a good time to make sure that we recognize all of our volunteers throughout our community because we certainly would not be the place that we are without all of them. I want to thank each of these individuals as well as everybody in our community. Any other comments? I know they're all nervous watching right now, hoping that they get appointed. Ms. Mitchell, I guess let's put them out of their misery. Would you please call the roll on M-3722?
Price.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R-422, matter of authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing to be held on April 18th, 2022 regarding reprogramming of certain 2020 and 2021 program year community development block grant funds.
Is there a motion to approve R-0422?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Vilani. Mr. Baumgarten?
Hi, Goodness Mayor. This is an action to merely set a public hearing. This is not the public hearing itself this evening. But we take advantage each and every year of the Community Development Block Grant Program, which is a federal program that allows us to make some improvements around the community. Because this is a federal program, it has very specific rules and steps that the city needs to take in order to remain in good graces of the federal government, as well as the county program, the county that, who administers this program on our behalf. And so this is one of the steps needed, setting a public hearing, holding a public hearing, and making sure the community is well aware of how we plan to put their funds in action in our community. So as noted, the Finance Director wrote a very detailed memo of how we intend to use those monies that we will, he'll be here at the next meeting to go over that. But I just wanted to let everybody know, it seems like, you know, an agenda item to have an agenda item in the future. This is a prescribed course of action that we have to follow in order to continue to receive funds and invest those funds in our community.
Right, so we are not accepting any of those or programming anything. We're just saying we're going to have a meeting this week about it, a public hearing at our public meeting, so that we can, in fact, do that. Questions on what we're looking at today? Again, we'll get much more into this with our Finance Director next week during the actual agenda items to reprogram. Seeing none, it's very quiet council this evening. Okay. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R-0422?
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, your choice.
Councilmember Baker.
I thought that was what it was. All right, Councilmember Baker, you are up, sir.
Well, hello, and happy April, everybody. Historical Committee has their meeting coming up on Tuesday, April 12th at 7:00. And now open is a special museum display on the Holland Hardware Fire of 1978, which is probably the biggest fire in Berkeley history over there on 12 Mile. Everyone who stops in will receive a gift, and children will get a junior fire chief's helmet to proudly wear and run around the neighborhood. Visitors are always welcome to the historical museum. It's open on Wednesdays from 10:00 until 1:00, and on Sundays from 2:00 until 4:00. And you can visit them online at berkeleyhistory.com. The DDA, the Board of Directors, meets on Wednesday, the 13th, at 8:30 a.m. It's the very next day, for those of you that plan on attending both, like I will. And I'd like to thank all of the business owners, the volunteers, and the staff for making the various leprechaun events throughout the amazing month of March tremendous success. And I see our esteemed Director of the DDA remains with us here this evening, and I want to thank him for his valiant efforts and tremendous energy in helping encourage a safe green month for us all here in Berkeley. And as was mentioned, Ladies Night Out returns this Thursday, a couple days from now, on the 7th, from 5:00 to 7:00. And again, as mentioned, over 20 businesses will be participating. So get on out there and enjoy all that our downtown Berkeley has to offer. And you can learn more about the DDA at downtownberkeley.com. And it was William Shakespeare, the bard, who once wrote, "April, dressed in all its trim, hath put a spirit of youth in everything." And April is noted as the month of reawakening. Birds return to singing, and flowers will begin their ascension. And we in the city, too, are beginning to reawake from both winter and from the peak of the COVID pandemic and beginning to enter into a new norm. So please continue to be safe, exercise caution, and get boosted when it's appropriate for you. And let's enjoy this month of reawakening throughout Berkeley. And so I'll just close again by saying, please stay safe, everybody, and hug somebody you love. Thank you.
Thank you, and let's hope we've seen the last of the snow for this reawakening month as well. Councilmember Price, do I have that control? Can I do that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Turbrack. I don't have anything new to report for my committee since our last meeting. Nevertheless, in honor of our recently proclaimed upcoming Volunteer Week, I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly recognize and thank the volunteers who serve the city on the boards and committees for which I act as liaison. So on the Library Board, Rita Brandigan, Mary Jo Armstrong, Carol Herman, Jordan Patera, and Amanda Rota. On the Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee, Nicole Minard, Sandy Fisher, Brandon Moss, Jay Sanders, and Katie Ware. Congrats on the new baby, by the way, Katie. On the Beautification Advisory Committee, Dan Mahasku, Anella Mahasku, Nick Armstrong, Stephen Bard, Jamie Cohen, Jim Frisch, Charlene Condra, and Jennifer Smittenberg. And I want to congratulate and thank, also thank the volunteers Emily Kemner and Adrian Penny, who were just appointed this evening to the Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee, and to Lynn Kadra, who is appointed to the Beautification Advisory Committee. I look forward to your contributions to these committees. And thank you to everyone who volunteers their time and talents to make Berkeley better. This week and always, we appreciate you. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Henan?
Yes, the Zoning Board of Appeals will meet on Monday, April 11th, for a sign variance at House of Renew on Woodward near 12 Mile. From the Tree Board, spring tree planting will start soon. This is new for us. It'll be the next 30 or so people on the waitlist. This is a result of a grant we were awarded from This is a result of a grant we were awarded from DTE. Also, planning Arbor Day event later this month, and investigating a tree inventory or tree canopy study, so we know what we have and where we want to go, and looking at an invasive species ordinance. And then just finally, now that COVID is lessening, I am resuming my Talk with Dennis events again. The next one will be Tuesday, April 19th, at the library. Anyone can stop by anytime between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. with any questions you might have or concerns you want to share. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Thank you, Your Honor. Lots going on at JCPark. The Friends of Berkeley Parks and Recreation is hosting a fundraiser for JCPark, inclusive play on April 30th from 10:00 a.m. until noon. There will be bounce houses and other family fun activities at JCPark, and all the donations raised will go to the JCPark fundraiser. And that's my segue into, the JCPark fundraiser is still happening, and we absolutely must raise a minimum of $50,000 to receive the MEDC match. For more information, please visit the city website at berkeleymish.org and look under the latest news tab, and you'll see a link to the JCPark development, which outlines everything really well and lets you know where to click and all of that and what the plans are. Tail on the Trail at JCPark will be in celebration of Earth Day. Enjoy pages from the book Apple and Magnolia at your leisure beginning April 22nd. There is no event signed up for this, and there is no cost either, and the story pages will be up for about two weeks for you to enjoy, so please check that out. Registration for specialty summer camps and summer day camp is now open and can be done online at recreation.berkeleymish.org. Hopping into Spring Senior Bingo is on April 19th at noon. The cost is $5 per person, and lunch is included. And then check out the Spring and Summer Berkeley Buzz for information on upcoming spring and summer events, including a very robust concert in the Park Series. I was pleasantly surprised, I knew Director McGarleton wanted to add concerts, and she certainly did. So check that out, not just for the concerts, but for all the offerings from Parks and Recreation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Planning Commission met and covered some very important issues. The capital improvements plan was presented for any questions and feedback from the Commission, and then will be on the next Planning Commission agenda for approval to then come to council. Planning Commission also listened to sketch plans for two marijuana retail shops and offered feedback on those sketches. There was no formal vote on either. Lastly, Planning approved a site plan with conditions for row homes along 12 Mile. So the next Planning Commission will be April 26th at 7:00 p.m. here in the chambers. And the Environmental Advisory Committee has not met since we had our last meeting, so the next meeting will be April 21st at 6:30 on the second floor of the Public Safety Building. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Vilani?
TAC has not met since our last meeting. Our next meeting is next week, Wednesday, so we'll be excited to have Lynn and Heather join us at that meeting. From the Berkeley Area Chamber, a few updates. The next chamber chat is on the 15th from 8:30 to 9:30 a.m. at Rewear Vintage. No need to register, just show up. Additionally, the American Legion is continuing its Sunday morning pancake fundraisers from 9:00 a.m. to noon on the first and third Sunday of the month. And as well as that, on Friday evenings from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., now through the end of Lent, there is the Lenten Fish Fry. It is carryout only. All proceeds go to veterans and community needs. Lastly, Eagle Rock Insurance presents a caregiver's guide to planning in the shadow of dementia. This is a virtual event on Tuesday, May 10th at 6:00 p.m. And lastly, I would like to wish the original, the OG Vilani, a very happy 97th birthday. My grandma just turned 97, and I have not been able to see her in two years, and I took Steve's advice, and I got to finally hug someone I loved, so.
Excellent, good for you, and congratulations to the OG.
The OG, the OGV.
Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo your words earlier in thanking the volunteers. Our staff gets to deal with some fantastic people, day in and day out, and represent some of their actions and the work that they do in our day-to-day operations, and it makes our lives much easier. And our staff is always pleased to serve as liaisons to some of these boards and commissions that, again, received some fresh volunteers this evening. So I'd like to echo the thank you to all of them. They really do make our world go around here. Next up, I do want to reiterate to folks that may be listening, if you think you are or could potentially be a victim or a fraud, or you suspect that fraud has occurred, please reach out to Public Safety, so they can initiate an investigation on those. I know we live in a very social world, and we're quick to sometimes kind of crowdsource some answers from our neighbors and peers. But instead of posting those on social media, if you think you've been a victim of a scam, please reach out directly to Public Safety so that we can investigate some items. It may very well be that you have discovered fraud, and others are potentially victims of this, but we need to know and be thorough on this, so that if we can confirm it, then we can post a warning to your neighbors and peers as well. That's important that they be on the lookout for these things. So please, we cannot reiterate this enough, please reach out to Public Safety first and foremost before going to social media on what you think might be a potential scam from, you know, from anyone out in the outside world. So, and other than that, just thank you, council, on behalf of staff. We love working hard on behalf of the community, and no one right now, and in the eve of election season, is working harder than our city clerk, who, mayor, with your permission, has some updates on the election front.
Certainly.
Thank you very much. Ballots went out for the May 3, 2022, special school election. So if you did submit an application to receive an absentee ballot, and you don't receive it by the end of the week, please feel free to reach out to our office, 248-658-3310, or clerk@berkeleymish.net. And those who would like to vote in person, all our precinct locations will be open on Election Day from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. We do have, this election is for the school district. It's a non-Homestead Millage renewal proposal only on the ballot. We will be serving all residents who live within the Berkeley School District, including a small portion of the City of Royal Oak. And if anyone has questions, they can come by and look at the sample ballot. And a great source would be to reach out to the school district directly for any information regarding the proposal. You can call them, or they do have quite a bit of information on their website at berkeleyschools.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hopefully, no news is good news, because I don't have any specific news to report to you. We continue to work closely with the city manager and staff on day-to-day matters and issues that arise, trying to keep the flow going, and of course, managing our current litigation, and there's no new developments on that front to report to you this evening.
All right, well, thank you. I already said what I was going to say, so I don't have anything else. Councilmember Baker, I guess we will not need a motion to suspend the rules this evening? I think we're going to be okay. So with that, I guess I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Dean with support from Councilmember Vilani. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. The April 4, 2022, meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley is adjourned.[1749.12]